Okay, we have a quorum. And the first topic on the agenda is acknowledge receipt correspondence. So Helene, tell me if I got this right, we've got a letter from Bill Cross. We got a letter of interest in our planning board seat. We've got a letter of thanks from Sean Hair. And we have Gary Russell resignation letter, all in our packets.
Correct. Yes.
With regard to the Russell resignation letter, I'd like to have permission to write a thank you for serving letter to Gary. And would take any input. Or if a board member would like to write it, but I would write it, be willing to volunteer to write it and take any line inputs from the board. Any comments, anybody want to write one or that idea?
I like the idea of you writing it, Ron.
All right.
Being willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. I will get to that. At this time, I'll open it up to the public for any comments not on the agenda with a two minute time limit. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Next item on the agenda, I would like to move the Memorial School request for administrative change to add a concrete pad for a utility shed to this point in the agenda. Only to get this out of the way. So with that in mind, I'll just have Sue give us a brief description of what this is. And what the planning board is expected to do on this.
Now, this was a request from the builder that they've decided that they would like to put a concrete pad under an existing utility shed. I did pass it on to the Conservation Commission and the building inspector. Neither had a problem with it, it is out of the resource area. So really, Mr. Orlando thought it was just an administrative change. And as long as the planning board thought that was appropriate, we would just ask them to put the new revised plan in the file and make note of it as being an administrative change.
So any comments from the board or questions on the proposed change? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the change.
I'm moved.
I'll think of it.
So I should just clarify that I'm on the Memorial School Building Committee. Does that exempt, should I exempt myself from actually, why don't I do that? Just for it's not, I don't need to?
No, that's going a little too far.
I haven't any opinion on this. And I have any personal input, so, okay. Just by just.
Who moved, who moved there?
I did, Sarah.
And it was seconded by Chris Alney. Any further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote on this. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms.
Uh-oh, he froze.
Ron, you cut out, you didn't, we didn't hear who you called for.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Alney?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. The next item. And I've, I put this on the agenda and then I had further discussion with Greg on this. But I want the board to think of and probably form this committee when we have a full board again. But I want to, at the recent town meeting, the article for blasting was passed, Article 13. So I would like to form a subcommittee to adopt the regulations and guidelines, maybe using state standards, maybe we ban perchlorite. And then we put the language in as the voters chose. So I'm thinking of forming a subcommittee with two or three board members and the fire chief. So I keep, keep that in mind if you're thinking that this might be something you would want to do in the future, but I don't want to form the committee until the August 23rd. And we'll have a full seven member board. So that's all I have on this subject. Any questions or comments?
Ron?
Yes.
This, why, why would this be in the zoning bylaws? Wouldn't this be a general bylaw? Where would this be?
I have the article in front of me. The general, it's the general bylaws.
I don't see why we should even weigh in on this. I don't think it's in, it's not really governing land use. It's more of a technical, almost chemical issue for the town. I think it's between the selectmen and the general bylaws, it seems to me, obviously with council.
Well, they've asked us to weigh in on it. We spoke at the town meeting on that, we've already discussed it, the board and Greg is told me that he wanted the planning board to set guidelines. I spoke to him again today on this.
I don't think he's, I disagree with him. I don't think it's something we should be getting involved in. We could comment, we'd be happy to comment like a lot. They pass things around for people's comment, but it's really not our jurisdiction.
Gary, Gary, I believe the way the bylaw, the general bylaw is written, it requires the planning board rather to be a permitting body, if you will, or an approving body for blasting. So it's adding, it is in the general bylaws, but it calls out that the planning board will specifically write regulations regarding it. So that's why, that's why you really don't have a choice of whether you want to weigh in on it or not. That was the bylaw that was adopted. That's my understanding, is that right, Ron?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
That's to me. You're saying bylaws say that the planning board will be the special permit granting authority for blasting permits?
It doesn't, it doesn't actually call it you a, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I don't believe it calls you permitting, the special permit, doesn't require a special permit. But I believe it does require the planning board to write regulations.
Regulations or guidelines on it, that's what I was told.
Article 13 amended the earth removal bylaw. Does that help you understand? So if we are the special permitting body for the earth removal bylaw, Article 13 was approved, 187 to 471. And it amended the earth removal section of the general bylaws. You want me to read what, just to remind you what it said?
No, well, that makes it, that's totally different than, this is part of the earth removal bylaw. And we are the SBGA for this earth removal bylaw. So yes, we are the SBGA. And, okay, I already wrote a draft, a revision of this earth removal bylaw. But that doesn't preclude this from being part of the existing one and/or the new revised one, which is a condensed version of what we've got. It's like a seven page, what we have now is a seven page rant, in my opinion. And it's, it should be reduced to just two and a half pages or so, or less than three. It should be more reasonable bylaw, but nonetheless, it wouldn't preclude this. So they're saying, basically, we wouldn't have much to contribute to the conversations. We, but not, okay, we're part of it.
We're part of it, and that's why I would want the fire chief to weigh in on it. Maybe we should.
Is the fire chief the main person in town or the DPW would also be?
I think the fire chief that grants permits for this blasting business.
So we won't generate language, right? We would review what's, what someone generates.
Well, the language has been generated, some language has been generated by the warrant. You know, square footage that triggers this, number of units that trigger this.
As I recall, the earth removal bylaw never mentioned blasting. This is adding a new issue to it.
Correct.
I still, I question this. I think it should be handled separately, regardless of what town meeting said. I'm not so sure that legally it belongs there.
I think if town meeting amended the specific section of the general bylaws, then the specific section of the general bylaws is already, is pending Attorney General approval is amended, whether we like it or not. I mean, we can't just pick and choose what town meeting does.
No, but town meeting could, could make something that doesn't have legal standing too. I mean.
For the attorney general to determine, not for us to determine.
How about town council, should, should, should they weigh in on whether this should be?
I can, I can. I can talk to Greg again about your concerns, Gary, and.
Or you could ask town council, does this belong as, should it be part of it? Should it be a standalone? Ask them to weigh in on this, because.
Well, we can't get, we can't, I can ask Greg to ask town council or Sue. I can't, we need permission to ask to talk to town council.
Well, town council would have opined on where to put it to begin with. So I assume that, that conversation has already happened. I would believe it would be on town council's advice of where to have put it.
I'm not proud to be difficult for no reason, but I have seen things get their ways into our bylaws in odd locations and with odd jurisdictions. I'm just saying that from experience, but I could be wrong.
Your point is well taken from my.
I will try to get some further clarification on that for you for our next meeting.
I can scan that right now for people and put it in around, send it around. I have it right here.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion on the blasting? Okay, so next item is an update on the LCD in your packets. Sue populated them with the MAPC scenarios, marketing strategy, marketing scenarios. And I think we'll have a brief presentation by Sue. And then, you know, like to discuss with you guys, with the board, what's, what's our strategy? How should we proceed? And some thoughts on how, where we go from here, big picture, don't want to get into the weeds right now. But let's take a look at what, what they have found. Okay, Sue. You can. Floor is yours.
All right, finding my way to unmute. So I hope that you've all had a chance to look through it. And just as a reminder, the reason that we're doing this study is because our master plan had a few goals, a couple of principal goals. And one was to increase the town revenue through plan development within the limited commercial district, as well as incremental growth downtown, and also to support a diversity of housing options throughout town. So you'll recall that we were in the middle of looking at the 40R, possibility of 40R there. We've, the board decided that because of the 40R's requirement for as of right housing and the requirement that at least 51% of development would be housing to, to dismiss that notion at this time and instead look at a town developed overlay district. So we've asked MAPC to kind of pivot on their scope. And the new scope, we asked them to develop three scenarios for the overlay district. Provide some research data on market feasibility to model these so that we could physically see what they might look like. And then to develop a matrix so we can compare some development impacts. The, and I just want to let everyone know that doesn't, is that as the first step of this, that the planning board chose the uses and the mix of uses for each of the scenarios. So I'm just going to briefly go through these scenarios that, that are shown in the plan. So one is called a balanced growth scenario. It's a mixed use neighborhood. It shows you there on the side what is involved in it. It is roughly similar or generally similar to what the MAC proposed. In this scenario, it shows us that using both the MAC site and the adjacent site where the storage facilities and offices are located. It puts DPW on the town owned site. It also shows some recreational fields there. I'm not, probably wouldn't be the best place for them, but I asked them to put public uses on that site and then the mix of residential and commercial on the other site. So this is generally what it looks like. And you can get an idea of how much land is taken up and how much space there is in between the uses and what uses would be adjacent. So this is just a really general overview of what it might look like. When MAPC did this, they did try, they did stay away from resource areas and work to the extent that they could with around topography. So they placed things to, to, to work with topography. Oops. So then they also looked at a lower growth, which basically nearly cut in half the larger growth. Or the larger, the, the balanced growth scenario kind of cut the housing in half, cut the hotel in half, nearly half the assisted living facility, et cetera. So you can see it doesn't look a lot different in the amount of land it takes up. But you will notice this one keeps the storage facility existing, puts all the housing on the MAC site. It still appears about to be about the same size. And when we get to the comparison, you'll notice the amount of acreage that is taken up by both is not that different. And then the third scenario that we asked to look for is the commercial industrial. We asked specifically for them to look at the life sciences center because we know that that is being something that someone was looking at for Manchester. This puts that on the MAC site and puts some office uses on the town site. Those are again, what the board asked to be modeled. You can see that this has the largest footprint and is a single use, but primarily because of the amount of parking that is required for that. And it, and it's a bigger, and it's a big building footprint as well. So the interesting part, I don't know if we can, I don't know if I can make that smaller. But you can see what we compared in the chart. So the daily vehicular trips, the water usage, yearly tax revenue, impervious, pervious surface. You can see that by far the daily vehicular trips are the commercial has by far the largest amount of vehicle impact. Water usage is not that much different, but the highest use is the balanced growth. The yearly tax revenue is the highest with the commercial. And the impervious surface is by far the highest with the commercial. So an interesting, an interesting mix and some comparisons that hopefully helpful for you. The, the study itself, and I didn't include the information here because it's mostly word and hard to put out there. But the study itself also provided some information on the likelihood or the market trends in the area to say, you know, how likely is it that it would get built or developed along these scenarios? MAPC noted that the balanced growth is a moderate to high likelihood that it would get developed. The low growth moderate and only because of economies of scale, it would be harder for a developer to make that fiscally or financially feasible. And then you might not be able to see it, I can't because my, oh, I guess I can move myself. They didn't think that the industrial commercial had a high likelihood. And just because there's not a large call for it. But if for some reason Manchester is very unique and someone is specifically looking to put one here, certainly it could be built. And then the, the middle area here, they just opinion opined on how it met the town's goals. Both of the first two do to some degree because of the impact to housing, helps support housing goals. The commercial industrial meets our economic goals, but of course doesn't have any impact on housing. So and this is just an image of what the open space between the hotel and the housing might look like. And you can see the cottages in the background there. The, I don't know if we need to look at these, I did, these are the assumptions that were used. They're also in the in the report. So that anybody that wants to really kind of dig in to say, you know, how did you get that? The assumptions that they used are in there. So I am happy to, to answer questions, look at any of the assumptions. Just like some feedback and I'll just go back here because the next steps, if the, if the board wants to identify a preferred scenario, our next step would be to draft a zoning language and design guidelines that would allow for this type of development. Their other option is to do nothing.
Any questions from the board to on the scenarios?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
So first, I think it's really useful exercise and it's very helpful to see these things laid out on the site. I'm kind of struck by the amount of parking that's required by the commercial project. Of course, half of me, four feet is a lot of square feet for any kind of a project. So, but we can use that as sort of a, you know, half of that size and still require a lot of parking. So it provides half the tax revenue. So I think it's a useful exercise. And you know, I think somewhere between one and two is where we should probably end up, but I'm just guessing.
Thanks, Chris. And I just, I will say that we use the 500 feet because that was the size of the facility that was being considered by the developer, by the life sciences group.
Okay.
Okay.
Which may have been phased over time, but 500 was the, the size that I was given.
Ms. Foley, you have your hand up.
Hi, Ron, thanks. Um, yeah, I was, I was having some issues with this. I mean, I, it's, I think it's a good start. I think it shows some good data. I'm wondering why we're kind of not comparing apples to apples. And maybe I'm looking at this wrong. So for like the commercial industrial, why wouldn't they utilize structured parking like the balanced growth scenario would? Why would their parking be so spread out and not use that? I couldn't find numbers for the balanced growth and low growth for parking. Yet they clearly stated what the commercial would be. I know we did mention life sciences, but I thought we also came up with other options that would be feasible, which would be office based research and development or assisted living. So I don't know that we specifically said it had to be life sciences. So that would change some of these scenarios. And I'm wondering, you know, it didn't have any clear site analysis. And they got into some of the water usage. But my calculations with what they gave us in detail wasn't calculating, calculating out to the grid. So maybe they can provide some backup data on, on those types of things. What else? I was surprised at the hotel, it was saying one trip per day. I did a little research and I couldn't find that case anywhere. So yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering where some of their data and calculations came from. So maybe they can provide backup data.
Sure, so um, I just, I have a couple of follow up questions. So on the structured parking, I, unfortunately, Chris was not available to join us tonight. And he could join us at a future date if that is helpful. And I'm happy to take back any, any questions to him. The structured parking had to do with not being able to use the topography of the site, break up the topography of the site. So it might be possible to do it. I mean, that really, this is just a, you know, a first glance at how it would work. But he wasn't able to really use and move things around because of the size of the facility. But it's possible that it could be a smaller footprint and that they could get some structured parking under it. The point of the, I wasn't clear what you said about the grid. So I don't, I think there was a question or a request for some information, but I wasn't sure what that was. So Mary, if you could repeat that piece, that would be helpful.
Um, I think it was with regards to, let's say, for example, water usage. I was taking what they gave further in the document of, of the different scenarios, like what the water usage would be for daycare, as adult daycare or assisted living or a housing unit. And then I was calculating out for the different scenarios, starting with the balanced growth, the low growth. And I was getting different numbers for water usage than they had. So I was just wondering where their calculations came from.
Okay, okay. So just, just a spreadsheet to show calculations. Okay. And then on the, the parking for the, the, the hotel was one, one vehicle trip per day per room. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
So what's, they're going, they're going out somewhere, where are they going and they're not coming back?
Right, well, I don't know. So this, these are, they, they used these from the vehicle track, I can't see my notes when it's full screen, but they used a a manual for these. They, these aren't, they, they're not made up. They, they used a manual for them.
No, no, I know, they, they use the trip generation manual.
Right.
So I, I don't, I couldn't find, well, I didn't have access to that. So, but I was looking at other things and I never saw that a hotel, I mean, they do analysis for suburban hotels and that would be maybe like 4.5 trips a day. So I'm, I was wondering where the one came from.
Great, okay. So I can confirm that.
Any, any other board members with some questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I think this is a good first start as well. And I'm struck by a couple of, first of all, in terms of the analysis, the, the table. You know, obviously there are assumptions being made. I would agree that the traffic, traffic needs to also include not just the people who live there, but any maintenance, like the, the staff at assisted living and at the hotel. So maybe that's in there or maybe it's not. But, okay. But the bigger question is the annual tax revenue. I presume that's from the assessed value. So it'd be useful to have the assessed values here because of the in the table. And then those are the assessed values, but they don't include the costs to the town. So if you have the balanced growth with more housing units, you have more kids and more, and then you have plowing, whatever the, you know. There's also, I was struck in the town report that we have considered, we have, I think $28 million in tax revenue and a million dollars in excise tax revenue. So that's another, that is a source of tax revenue that's probably should be reflected here. There would be zero presumably from or modest from a commercial um, industrial site, but quite a bit from when there's residential, that you'd have the excise taxes of cars and boats and stuff. Um, but I do think that the net of, you know, the obvious one is school and schoolchildren and the contributions to that expense does make things with residential less, is the, the assessed value is only one part of the picture. And I agree with Chris that a 500,000 square foot building is enormous and is is, is maybe, might make sense to, to look at that a little bit, you know, something quite a bit less with, or maybe industrial condos or I don't know. Um, and then I guess the last thing I'm struck by, and I've been thinking about this for a while, is that I know the master plan goals that you had in the beginning indicate revenue from the LCD in the amount of $2 to $3 million. And I think this analysis helps us to see that that number may be unrealistic. Um, in terms of, you know, think about a 500,000 square foot building as the one that can generate almost $2 million in assessed value at today's tax rate. That's an enormous building and, and that still isn't two to three. That's an enormous building, and and that still isn't 2 to 3, and there's a lot of ifs there, so. That is what it is, right, and it may be that we have to, we we should think about accepting that that goal was, you know, a good goal, but may not be realistic with today's tax rate. And lastly, there might be an opportunity going forward to change the tax rate, in which case, commercial, industrial, and some parts of the other two might be taxed at a different rate, so it'd be good to have the assessed value, I think, of the two of residential and commercial or industrial, at least listed separately, and then people could think about that as a planning tool in the future.
Yeah, Ron, can I just address just a couple of those real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Sure, yeah, so this is not, by far, didn't look at all of the impacts. Your point is well taken. What I would say is that while the master plan was hoping or looking at 2 to 3 million, and we still think it's possible, remember, this is just really three little, three small sites, maybe 60, so it doesn't include any of the Gordon land, it doesn't include the brown property across the street, so this is just a granted, we think it's the most valuable site in terms of development potential and support, but it isn't, it's clearly isn't the entire limited commercial district. I do think the excise tax, the hotel tax was, the room tax, we know that's available option, that wasn't in there as well, so those are good points, and I will see if we can put those in there as well, and the assessed value certainly. When, even when the the town did an initial evaluation of it on its own a couple of years ago, it showed a far less conservative numbers than are showed here, so I do think these are conservative, but I don't want to dismiss them, I think MAPC did a good job looking at comparables and coming up with that, so. I'm pleased that you think it's a good first step and at least gives us some numbers to work with, so I'm thankful for your comments.
Gary Gilbert, any comments?
Yeah. Well, the first thing is I'd really like to have the guy from MAPC come in so we can talk to him. I think that should be the next step, not that we jumped towards rezoning, drafting any rezoning yet. There's a lot of parts to this that we should pick apart. I mentioned at a couple of different planning board meetings that the projection of a hotel, anything bigger than a boutique hotel, is highly questionable. And if you pull that out of the picture, it vastly affects the tax revenue. A hotel, a friend who knows a hotel consultant who's done work locally in Salem and in Beverly projected that there's only a need for a 20, 20 room boutique hotel, that 120 units is just pie in the sky, and that there's no market need for it, I'd like to, that's an important piece of the puzzle, as is tax rate. Beverly has approximately $12, approximately as a tax rate for residential and around $24 for commercial. Would we seriously consider having a second tax rate in town, a commercial tax rate? That would affect these numbers tremendously. It's worth talking about, at this stage of the conversation, it's absolutely worth talking about. If it's part of the picture or not part of the picture, because it affects everything. And then as a point of comparison, I went back to something I've written about and talked about before. If I could share the screen, I could show an image of it, but the Wells Fargo Advisors has an office in a four story high, fairly concise office building, it doesn't look grotesquely huge, but it's sitting right on 128 on Conant Street. And I checked with the appraiser, the assessor again in Beverly, and she said it, she confirmed it's it's producing around a quarter of a million dollars in tax revenue in a building that has a footprint of only 16,000 square feet. The total gross area is 66,000. So I question his assumption as to how much need, how little need, he's got very little commercial, like office space. The kind of stuff, the kind of a customer's coming center is getting, I've always thought we could get some of those, you know, medical professional offices, other kinds of commercial tenants in facilities here, and why are they showing such small amounts of commercial usage in their projections? And then, again, the point of comparison is a building like that with only 15, 16,000 square foot footprint is producing a quarter of a million dollars in revenue, I suspect these, that why should we unnecessarily have low projections for tax revenue? Because we want to look at a approximately realistic picture if we're going to start steering the ship. Again, another reason to have a dialogue with the person who generated all this. I'm just jumping through a bunch of points. The tax goals, Sarah said they may not be realistic, but I think that they I think that they are in a lot of ways realistic, because they are Greg's projection about what the town needs above and beyond our our existing cash flow, annual cash flow. We do need to try to get a couple of million dollars, 2 to 3 million. I believe that those numbers are true, because we have big expenses ahead of us. Sarah knows more than anybody how much it costs to build schools, and Essex is going to do a school next, and there's a number of things on the list that that require big chunks of money. But we're also getting revenue, as Sue said, from the rest of the LCD eventually, this is all a five or 10 year build out, I guess. And then also downtown, I assume that we are going to, at some point, redouble our efforts on possible mixed use or other development downtown, there is a number of possibilities in the air, and we don't really talk about that enough, but that would be potentially tax tax revenue generating. And Mary mentioned about how how much parking, I mean, through our bylaws, I believe we we can require structured parking, but it really hurts the developer, drives up their costs. But there may be some rationale to do it, maybe we require that part of their parking is structured. That's something to look at through zoning regs, but it is expensive, it's really ruthlessly expensive in the development world. Structured parking just is expensive, but it might be appropriate. It's worth discussing, so. And then the the bow, well, let's see. It's interesting to note the commercial development is, it produces twice the revenue, but it's also twice the size, and again, I guess that has to do with the land usage. So those are some of my comments.
And can I just address one thing? I just want anyone that's listening to to know that these weren't, the numbers were not were not developed by MAPC, the board told them what to model. So you you recall, we kind of went our first, the the balance one is roughly equivalent to what the MAC projected, and then we just took those uses and we cut them down, so he didn't say that this is the best mix of uses, we gave him that mixes. Someone who is actually going to develop it, of course, would go in and say, here's the best mix of uses based on what the market is demanding and their goals for the property development, so I just want people to know that MAPC didn't say you should make this size motel hotel and this size commercial, they just really modeled what we asked them to model, so I just wanted to be clear on that.
Sue, I'd like to go back to what I mentioned at a previous meeting. We, I think we desperately need to be informed by perhaps commercial leasing agents or by somebody who does have their finger on the pulse of what the needs are in this area for commercial use. I think these are really small square footages for commercial use, and they are good tax generators. It would give us a more realistic picture of what we're talking about. Also, the hotel, can we reach out to, I mean, I can get you the name, I believe you probably have the name through Peter of this hotel consultant, let's get some, somebody who's really working in these areas to inform us of what the actual needs are, because it throws our numbers off too much, and it'll make us spin our wheels, and we do that enough as it is.
Yeah, I I I think this is a really good first start. It sounds like from the board, Sue, that we would maybe want to have Chris come in at some time if he's money left, but also what I'm hearing and what I see is that MAPC is not so commercially slanted, and maybe there would be some other in in with what Gary was saying to advantage someone else to give us a more commercial slant on this.
So just, so in the report, they actually do go and look at market trends for commercial use, and that the takeaway, and I'm, if I'm reading it wrong, someone can, should correct me, but the takeaway was there was not a high demand for office at this point. So they felt that the large office, there was very little demand, and there's nothing in the pipeline, and that the more modest size had a more reasonable demand at this time, so. I think that they they did go to their marketing folks and their economic development folks for this plan. Granted, we had a small pot of money to do this amount of work, so, but I don't, I I agree that we should bring in a number of people to kind of help us assess what the best and highest value uses are for the, for the, for the area, so.
I just, at a higher level, and I was thinking how, any thoughts on how we should proceed, I think, kind of was slanting on bringing MAPC in and others to further drill down, maybe first, Chris, to answer some of these questions the board has. Any, any comments from the board on moving in that direction?
Ron, this is Mary, could I make a comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to, yes, I wholeheartedly agree. MAPC hopefully can come in and and discuss in further detail. I wanted to add that something that potentially they could add, since it's in the scenarios, and these daily vehicular trips are quite high, especially as we're facing a 40B on just the other side of School Street. Since they're in two of the scenarios, the DPW and it's kind of new to me, recreation fields, but if we could get the DPW daily trips added to this, since that would be coming out of there, and and recreation, which would be you know, spotty, but it would happen, and then the number of parking spots for recreational fields added to the data.
Okay. Sue, any comment on adding some more scope?
I I can look at these, all these requests and either address it with text or put it in or find the numbers for it, and it may be, it may be baked in there, I'm not, I mean, he didn't call it out specifically, so. I think that DPW daily trips, good idea, and and I don't, I I think I prefaced saying I don't, I asked him to put public uses on the, on the town owned sites. I don't think fields would be appropriate there, that would take a lot to to make a flat space up there for that. But they are shown, or we could ask him to change the use, but if they stay there, we could certainly look at how much parking for fields.
Okay, and and thoughts on getting Chris in here, it sounds like the board would.
Yeah, for sure, he just wasn't available, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have one quick point to make.
Yes, Chris.
So we, I think we can get trapped easily into trying to do a master plan here as opposed to creating a zoning framework. And I don't think we should get too bogged down in you know, exactly how big a hotel should be, or whether it should be structured parking, and that's something that the developer eventually is going to tell us, we're just, we're just trying to set the guidelines, what the rules are for trying to figure out what a development project should be guided by, not trying to establish what it is.
Chris. Part of the design guidelines could, would very much, could very much dictate whether we want to see structured parking, for example, so some of this some of what you said, yes, and some of what you said, I think we can address.
Sure, yeah, I'm not suggesting that you know, this is something that's going to evolve over time, but.
But but also, if, let's say we had 100 square feet, and we we zoned it all for commercial use, and there's only a need for 10 square feet, we we've gotten nowhere.
Agreed.
Again, it does affect how we zone.
Agreed.
Okay, I think we should move on.
Can I ask one other question, sorry, Ron?
Go ahead.
Ask one other question, sorry. This is just procedural, I apologize, but I have not delved into the report, I was looking in the wrong place on SharePoint, so I didn't delve into the report. Is it appropriate for me to make comments directly to Sue, or should I save them for the next meeting? On the report?
Specific comments on the report, I I would think Sue can take them.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to take Sarah's or anyone's comments on it and funnel them through to MAPC and talk about what we can do with the scope that's left.
And they could probably be asked when Chris comes in, Sarah.
Yeah, and I and I can come, and I can compile them so that everyone.
Yeah, I think I gave them. And then I guess the other thing that, to echo Chris's comment, that this is is sort of a combination of Chris and Gary's comment, you know, this is a a basis for thinking about zoning, and just because we zone it a certain way doesn't mean that that out, the outcome we envision will will result. You know, we could say our our vision is the, even a 200,000 square foot Wells Fargo building, and we might get you know, my little office, or whatever, you know, you don't know what you're going to get, so. So we might really want to think about outcomes, and I would, my reaction to this whole thing in terms of outcomes is that the image on page eight of the little community is not the outcome we want. Because I think one of the goals of the town, of the master plan, is to enhance the downtown, it's exactly what we want in the downtown. But that that image of people in a hotel and people congregating around a a spot, I mean, it's not to say that it's a bad thing to have happen there, but to see that, I mean, that that looks like downtown Manchester, and we don't want to put downtown Manchester out by the LCD, out by the MAC. And I I don't think that the, any of the scenarios actually probably do that, but I think it's something to keep in mind that we're not trying my opinion, and I'm new to this discussion, so I apologize, my opinion is that we are not trying to create another town center. And the image on page eight looks like another town center, so I would ask MAPC to really think about whether those uses would really result in that kind of a place, because it's it's a place that they've created, and in terms of outcomes, I think we want to enhance the wonderful place that we have downtown and make sure that our zoning supports that, so that's just a reaction from, I know you guys have talked about that, and I may be in the minority on that, that thought. So.
Ron, can I respond to that a minute?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Gilbert.
I I think we're, we all share, I think, the view, I I think we all share the view that we don't want to create a competitive space for downtown, and I think we can zone it in such a way that we're not allowing a lot of retail, for example, or we're only allowing a restaurant kind of a thing. That we can do through zoning, and it's always been our intent, I don't think there should be concern about that. I know as an architect, the pretty picture they made, which is beautifully rendered, that perspective, it's a fun, happy little downtown scene, but that's what, you know, architects do, they make pretty lively, wonderful pictures. You want to be there, so I don't, I don't think that's where we're driving this bus, but there will be activity there, there there could be a boutique hotel, there would be assisted living, so there'll be people, and there'll be green spaces, and there'll be parking, and but we can control, I believe, what are the outer limits, say, we control the horizontal, we control the vertical. I I believe that we intend to do it, and we can do that, and I think in the end product, we may have the tax revenues closer to what we want. I think we really need to be in tune with the market as part of this exercise, so in closing, Sue, could you touch base again about the biotech, which I I do believe was one of the directives we gave, is since it had been proposed, and we'd spoken a couple of times at meetings, I think Peter Gudrow, who might be listening, Gordo, is he's involved in that, I believe, but could you touch base again with him to see his response or or his projections or needs in alignment with what one of these scenarios is?
So, I'm sorry, I'll just quickly respond, so I don't know. So the 500,000 square feet was what I got from them. I mean, it could be phased, could be 250, 250, or 300, 200. I don't think, I don't, I don't know if anyone knows what that would ultimately be, I don't know what I would go back and ask. So.
Well, just if the assumptions still stand, if.
Oh, the 500?
Yeah, and the surface, the the total parking, I don't. Touching base with anybody who's who's. Touching base with anybody who's, who's in the business, who knows these land uses is going to help us a lot.
Okay. So I, the, the next step would be to have maybe Chris come in, field some questions from the board to take this to a, that next baby step forward. Okay, thanks Sue.
You're welcome.
Okay, the recodification roadmap committee. Give you a brief update. Last week, Chris only, Sue met with Alan Wilson and Mark Bobrowski. We discussed procedures in presenting our zoning bylaw changes at the next projected fall town meeting. I have to tell you, you know, we, we went back and forth on what we, what we should present. I'll tell you that Mark Bobrowski is very confident in his presentation, no matter how much we, we present at this meeting. Question came up, what will the audience or the town participation be like in November? We discussed the dates of when Mark would be available for town meeting and then November eighth and November fifteenth were thrown out as preferred dates for a town meeting as far as the planning board was concerned. And then we decided, and Chris or Sue, correct me if I'm not catching all the big points, but we decided that we would create a, generate a priority document of which the board's feeling of how much of the so-called enchilada do we want to present at the November town meeting? So that, and I want to thank again Sarah and Chris for generating the document. Document was presented to us late this week. Most people have responded. Chris and Sue, am I, before we get into the results, I'll have Sarah and Chris present. And did I miss anything, any other points from the meeting we had last week?
So my takeaway from it was that Alan Wilson thought if we presented the whole thing at a town meeting, that we should do it in the spring when there's going to be much bigger participation. If we try to do all of it in the fall, it, it, it's just not the most democratic way of doing it. So then we talked about, well, if we don't want to do all of it, it was, oh, I guess the other thing is the selectmen haven't decided whether or not we're going to have a fall town meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I did, they did talk about a date last meeting and they were leaning towards November eighth, although I believe one member could not make the eighth. And they were, they did not vote on it, but they will be voting at their next meeting. And I did put a bug in Greg's ear today that we would prefer the fifteenth to give us more time, no matter which way we go.
So in any case, assuming there is a fall town meeting, that it might be wise just to introduce some very administrative, non-controversial items that won't require much discussion to get people used to the idea of restructuring the bylaw and then in the fall doing the more controversial ones. But Mark Bobrowski pointed out that if we change the order of everything, then we have to redo it all again in the spring when we introduce new articles and new sections and so forth. So it's kind of a conundrum as to how to, how to do this. And it may be the wisest thing to do is just put it off to the next spring and do it all at once and just be ready for it. So that's, that's where we are.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Please, no. I'd be happy to talk to Alan. There's nothing undemocratic about bringing things to vote at a town meeting.
Gary, please talk to Alan. He was very adamant about it, so it's not, I don't think it's a negotiation, but yeah, have a talk with him.
It'll be decided by the selectmen and Alan, obviously. But we've worked a long time on a lot of these issues. They can't, they shouldn't stay stagnant for too long. And to my mind, and it is legal, it is democratic to have a town meeting and these are issues. I wish we had a representative town meeting. Nobody ever mentions that. Because to, to have a town meeting is quaint, but when you have to deal with all these technical issues, it, it is a problematic thing. It is difficult. Everybody's got to get their brain around them and ideally listen to the experts and sort of go the direction that advisors say, but it's a really cumbersome, cumbersome thing to do is zoning land use legislation at a town meeting where everybody gets a vote. It's inherently difficult. But I don't know, I guess maybe I could talk to Alan if he's that adamant.
Well, I, I just, and then we sent out, I wonder if Sarah, you could share kind of where, where the board, what the board feels. Where they're depending on what subject we want to do in, in the fall.
Sure. So, you know, I think that the point here is what are we going to do at the next town meeting? Whether that's in the fall or the spring or any other time, but you know, what are we going to get work on first is, I think, the way. Might be one way to think about it, but just for people, let me share my screen. What we did, I think the board members here, oops. Looked at this and we can make this, I think, a work in progress. But for people who didn't see this, and I know that, Chris, we didn't get this out until Friday morning, Friday midday, and there was some confusion about it. So we, people may want to rethink this. So I think Ron and I at least talked about, you know, not having this finalized tonight perhaps, although I think there's one pretty clear thing. Nonetheless, what we did is Chris provided a list of the major issues. They were what section? And this column here, A, B, C, D is simply section two, item A, just so we'll make it easier to refer to things. So we, let's just focus on that. Then we said, what are the issues that the new, that the revisions to the zoning address? Just summarized, whether they're summarized exactly correctly or not, it was not the, not the point. And then the point here is this is a poll, not a vote of this board, because we were independently doing this. And so, for example, in section three, one of the things that is proposed is tables that replace the narrative and so forth, swimming pools and overnight parking and so forth. So each of us, I'll take me, ranked those things one through five. And the question was not whether I was for or against it, but whether or not I felt this should move forward at the next, what, as one of the priorities that we advanced first. And so I did that and, and one of the things that I was hampered by is I, I was focused on the process, not always the content. So I'm going to defer back to you guys on some of this content, as because you've spent more time on it. I think, Gary, I don't want to speak for you, but I think it's pretty clear, and Gary and I did talk about this, that Gary ranked everything five, pretty much, because I think you want to move many things for the next town meeting. So that's fine. That indicates that you feel all of these things can get done and that, that this is a priority. So that was, that's great. And then if I had wanted none of them, I would have ranked them one, as, you know, I want to wait three more years, whatever. So then I consolidated the results, so it's an average. If people in the board want to see the math to just to check it, you do have to seem to refresh it to get this consolidated score to be correct. I don't have the right version of Excel on my personal computer to have it, do it in real time, but nonetheless.
This is the results of, Sarah, this is the results of five members currently.
Five members, correct. Yes, Christine did not have a chance. We got it to her before she had, what, before she was out of. After she was out of touch, so not, no, no criticism there. So not everybody has weighed in. And so the total is here, so the total is divided by five. So that makes four point six is about twenty-three. So now you can see that there are a couple of areas where there's essentially of those of us who weighed in, there is some agreement that we should move that forward. That section one, the definition of districts and the division of R one and R D one and R D two seems to have pretty good consensus that we should move that forward. Using a table to replace the narrative seems to have pretty good consensus. Less so, I would argue, on addressing the dimensional requirements for accessory units, which I thought went with the accessory dwelling unit piece. Less so, these are, have less consensus. And then those that are junk vehicles, marijuana, those are these administrative changes in section seven, seems to me like six and seven is pretty clearly a section where we can write something up, get an article, a draft article that we can then have in our toolbox when, when the time, you know, depending whether it's November or September or somebody else. And then so plan development deleted, some of these other administrative things came up high, higher. But you can see that less, so we, lastly, I'll just point out that the other, I, I'm not sure I even have the score there. Stormwater was just something that somebody had raised. And then I did add here the proposal for the maximum, I, I'm not sure if it's a driving, driveway length, access length. That Bill Cross raised last time and, and we have an email about that in our correspondence. So I thought it was important to put it on the list, because if the citizens are going to put it forward, then we're going to have to hold a hearing anyway. So let's not lose sight of it as, as we plan our time. So that's what that is. And then we can talk about what we're going to do with it, if anything.
So.
Yeah, I got the first question, Scott, sorry, Ron, one last thing. Each, I didn't consolidate yet the comments, so, so Chris had a lot of comments. So there's an, also was an opportunity for people to vet, to say who they thought should be the spokesperson for this issue or is most knowledgeable. And then what sort of notes to everyone? And we can consolidate those or you can look at them. So, or when, or go back and add things if you want to. But I, to me, when I looked at this, one of the big questions is, do we do all, we, and we start, started talking about this last time. Do we want to do all at once or do we want to do it in pieces? That's the first, seems to me the first decision.
So I think these trends are just, you know, my feeling is that the board is looking to do this in pieces. It looks like there's some definitely no brainers on there that may be appropriate to a fall town meeting with a, you know, not a full participation by everyone in town. So I think that makes more sense to me. And then maybe a few of these housing ones that we're, we feel are pretty confident in should be maybe presented, but maybe as separate to the no brainer ones. That's my thought.
That makes sense to me. I think we could make, we could start right now by having maybe Sue and Mark write an article for, maybe pick the ones that are pretty, pretty, there's, there's largely agreement. Might make sense to, and then draft, what is, you know, what does that look like? Replace section, whatever with whatever, the new language. The challenge is going to be, you know, some of the renumbering. And we may have to live without the renumbering if we're going to do subs, other substantive changes. Because I don't know how you renumber and then amend. And so.
Um, Sarah? Or Ron?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
I'm not sure how I feel about this whole effort. You can renumber and amend. I mean, if, let's say you don't want to vote on three items right away, you could just renumber them into the new sections. And they, they would go to a different location and change the wording of them later. Abstractly speaking, I think that could be done. I wanted to, I have two, two things. I'm not sure that your list covers everything we talked about. And there's a number of the items in here, I think everybody probably saw that, that are so mechanical and probably, probably fairly easy to deal with. Like who's going to object to making a parking table instead of what we had with a little list? And anything not on the list, the building inspector decides? That was always crazy. When we reviewed the high school, we were supposed to invent criteria for how much parking to require, because we had nothing. So that and the use tables, and then there's a number of administrative sort of simple to vote on and pass items, probably at least half of them, right? And it might be only eight or twelve that are going to be really controversial. I don't know the answer either, but.
Well, we need to start thinking and point towards one. Because we need to hold a public hearing. And once that happens, which will probably be closer to the date, I think, as Chris had pointed out last meeting, zoning bylaws get held up.
Ron, if I might suggest a, a next step, and that is, I'm going to volunteer Chris again. But Chris did a great job of sort of color coding the, what, what Gary, I think accurately described as the administrative changes. I'm going to suggest that we at least take a stab at what a warrant article would look like for those things that look like we have agreement in this. I'm surprised, I'm actually very heartened that we have agreement on a number of, not agreement, but near agreement, high scores on many of these changes. And I would suggest that maybe we craft some language that says, can you, is it, is it possible to just take out section two and substitute in the new section two? Take out the section, whatever, and put in this table for dimensional requirements? And try to, and, and if there are modifications that have happened concurrently, then that's where we would have the discussion. But I'd be happy to work with Chris again and at least see if we can create the draft. And so I think, you know, maybe can create some of that too, some straw specific articles that we then move forward and then we work through the list. Those are the ones that have four, roughly a four score and that, I, I don't want to set a particular. I think this poll is enough, a little bit subjective that it's, I don't think we have a hard and fast cutoff. And then we work through those that are a little, that we know that we can have less agreement on.
Sounds good to me, but there's new sections being added. I think we're going from seven sections to twelve or maybe eight, so.
Have to renumber.
And then to Gary's point, do we have everything? Is, is that, is that chart have everything, I guess?
Well, we, we offered the, Ron, we offered the chart to everybody to comment on and Mary gave us a bunch of items that we added. Topics to this.
Ron, this is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
So, gosh, I don't know where to start. I agree with what's being said, with what Sarah said, that, you know, drafting a warrant article for the administrative changes. I have said this multiple times throughout this process and I have, you know, real concern with this. We, this was brought to town vote for monies for recodification. And recodification is to codify and there's clear definitions on that. I'm sure everybody knows what that is. So we, we really didn't go to voters asking for policy changes. So I think with the scope of this getting so convoluted, we have to step back, look at what the Bobrowski contract was and what the deliverables were. He clearly put them into two categories. And hopefully what we can get from him is a deliverable that is the warrant article for the recodification piece, which is the administrative changes. And then if we need a phase two and a phase three for the other items, that's what we do. And I think it's a perfect time, if, if his contract is being renegotiated and going from a lump sum of the forty thousand to an hourly fee, that. that he needs to honor his deliverable from the original contract. So I think we go with the clean, clear recodification, which is the administrative changes.
Ron?
That's my, Sue, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want it to let it stand that, that the voters simply voted for recodification and that only meant organizational changes. That's just not true, and it's reflected in all of the early conversations that we had. And from the very beginning, the conversation was that if we were taking things out or changing things, making changes, we weren't going to put things back in for a new plan that wasn't up to date, that wasn't, wasn't reflective of our master plan. His terms was, we're not taking garbage out and putting garbage in, that we would do the cleanup and make the changes that were necessary. So I just don't want to let it stand that, that it's true that, or that it was the opinion, or that somehow the, the scope got changed. It has always been to make changes that we thought were appropriate and that we could get community support for. So I just want to strongly object to Mary's thoughts on what she thought was going to happen.
Well, so I'll just clarify, I, maybe I didn't say correctly. So the warrant article that was voted on was zoning bylaw recodification and for the $50,000. And then the two categories in the contract for category one changes easiest to resolve, which is simple numbering, relocation within bylaws, deletions, et cetera. And then to your point, Sue, which is correct, that category two is changes to bring the bylaws into legal conformity, includes changes to reflect new case law or statutes, resolution of internal inconsistencies, new definitions. So that all falls under the recodification. I think we get, when we get into changing policy and adding bylaws, that's when we gear it off.
So Ron, let me just, if people want to take the, if people want to take out the contract and look at it, she's reading about two parts of one section, and then there's another section that talks about other changes. So I've tried to explain this before, but I just, I don't need to go over it again, but the contract stands.
I think, I think we're getting a little off the subject. Let's get back on the agenda item of how, I like Sarah's idea with Chris coming up with some of this low hanging fruit, so to speak, for next meeting. And then I think we should start picking off what other larger, maybe semi controversial, if that's a word, items we might want to add in besides the low hanging fruit items and proceed that way towards some kind of goal in the next few weeks or months.
Can I say something here?
Go ahead.
None of this, of all the changes we're talking about, none of this radical. We're not talking about allowing nuclear power plants in the downtown. So, you know, this is, we're talking about really, in the scale of things compared to what other towns are doing, for the most part, minor changes to the bylaw and making them legal, for one thing, and making them easy to understand for another. You know, whether we change a setback from 10 feet to eight feet, that's not a major change in policy, I don't think. So I don't think we should be scared of making changes here. This is what we're, we're tasked to do by the town, and what's what planning boards are supposed to do. Is keep the zoning bylaw in current with what's happening in the world. So I think, but on the other hand, I don't think we should be bringing up things at town meeting that might, you know, we don't want to have the good ruined by the perfect. So maybe we have to start off by trying out a few changes and see what happens, and then, and then in next spring, go in for the rest of it. Once people understand that these aren't earth shattering changes we're making to the town.
Ron, I feel I need to weigh in on this briefly. I completely want to reinforce what Sue Brown said, and I really take objection to, again, Mary Foley mischaracterizing what our intention is and what our duties are. It's worth, it has to be pointed out that this isn't about us going to the voters for policy changes and asking their permission to do so. It's our job to propose policy changes. We're a land use control board. We're here to advise the town on land use regulations. And we have every single right to make some changes that could be policy changes. I agree with everything Chris said, but above and beyond that, some things may be more substantive. And it's appropriate that we bring them to the town and we propose them, and that's part of what we've worked on for a couple of years now. I don't know what this references to a warrant article voted on. There was no warrant article voted on allowing, telling us what our scope of the changes to the bylaws should be. So again, that's another mischaracterization of what our chart is. So I just want to clarify that and reinforce what Sue said. Thank you.
Okay, I want to stay on topic here on our next steps, and I'm thinking I'm getting consensus on this idea that Sarah proposed on some of these administrative changes, starting to write a warrant article on that. Is that acceptable to the board to proceed with that for next meeting?
Just point out, Ron, there's a hand raised from a 410 number. Is that Christine?
It is. Hello. So I just want to jump in and ask for thank you for some clarification. I'm hearing bits and pieces. I'm still a little, whatever. Are we not going to present the recodification as maybe version five, six, seven, anything? We're going to keep it as it is and just change sections? I'm a bit confused right now. I think we need to keep the recodification as we've been working on it and keep the language as it was, and then in the spring, replace language. But I think the renumbering is like the crucial part of it, in my opinion, and the tables and the parking tables. That's my opinion. I think we paid a heck of a lot of money. We need to take advantage of and get the renumbering done now. And I think we can go forward with some time and materials in the future and replace them as needed. But I think we need to get the bulk of it in front of the voters in the fall. That's my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments from the board on how to move on this?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to pay Sarah back and volunteer us again to maybe propose what this new, what this thing would be in the fall, is it outlined? And then we can vote it, and then we can move on. Maybe do it at the next meeting.
We'll take a stab at it.
I think that's great. Why don't we, with that in mind, and we'll see what we have for next meeting.
But I'd ask Christine, when she gets back, if she could fill it out so we can incorporate her her score in this thing as well, that would be useful for us too.
Absolutely. I'll have it done first thing in the morning.
I think, Gary, it would be also helpful to have a sense of your priorities. I think you've made, will note somewhere that you wanted it to be passed as an entire, essentially as an entire, all of the issues. But if that isn't going to come to pass, maybe it would be helpful to know which of the, which of the things, if you have to cherry pick, knowing that you're doing that under duress, to know which of those things are prior. I really would love to have a sense that, you know, of that, of however many 15 things, we had agreement that seven of them were things we should, we all agreed on, essentially agreed that they were moving forward, so.
Certainly is a few that could, that could be dealt with in the, in the spring. But I'd like to point out also, Alan Wilson is the one who suggested to have a fall town meeting to vote on the zoning bylaw changes that we worked on for years. And let's not forget that we worked on this for years to have, to have this drag on another half a year, another year. It's, I mean, we had a virus that hit the world, but.
That was pointed out to him.
That was pointed out to him?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah. Okay, Sarah, I'll take a stab and send you a, you can still revise this Excel spreadsheet, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely. It's live. The other thing is that unless we have a warrant article that looks like a warrant, has language that is actionable by a town meeting rather than a red line document, we, I don't think we have something that, that can pass a town meeting. So we have to now move from a red line document to something that looks like a town meeting, a warrant article. And so that's where I think the, that's where we're having a really hard time. We have a red line document that's got a whole range of things in it. And so the challenge is, how do you write a warrant article? And, you know, some of the sections are, can be easily just delete the old and put in the new, but not all of it. And that's going to be a bit of a challenge. It may have to take two meetings.
And in fact, one of the things that Alan wanted was to make sure that in the warrant article itself, it, it's clear what the intent of the new language is, why it's being, doesn't have to be a big paragraph, but it could, at least a couple of sentences so people understand what we're doing.
Yeah, so it seems to me, might want to have one warrant article that says, delete the following sections in order to comply with state law.
Yeah.
That seems like you could create a warrant article just around those things. Or a few tables to make the, to make, to clarify the language in the zoning article. So those things, I think you can.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be rude, but I don't know how to approach you, Ron, on the telephone. But is there not a reason why we can't take like version two or three, which was the exact intent of this? And propose that and basically say, this is the new recodification, these are the changes, this is the new numbering. There's nothing new being proposed here and highlight things that were illegal or brought in, nothing new? And then introduce, then introduce the new changes? I, I think we need to get the renumbering in. I think that's exactly what we are paying for, and to miss this opportunity, I think, would be a shame.
And I think the way that you do that, excuse me, is maybe you do the whole new document, and let's say there's six items. We want to say, gee, let's wait till the spring to deal with them. Keep the old language, but with the new numbering, and it sits there. And then, if, if it's going to help you, I could try to go through and work up a sentence or two about the whys of each part of it, because I followed every single meeting.
That'd be great.
But let's.
Add a column, put those in the notes of the, each of those issues.
It might require a Word document. It would be too lengthy, but
Okay.
It could be an email to the board, but so I'm thinking, again, the whole new, whatever you want to call it, baloney, or it's not baloney, pickup meat or the whole thing. And, and the parts of it that were not, the enchilada, there you go. The parts of it that we may have a consensus on, that we want to hold on ourselves, which is a little bit of shooting ourselves in the foot, but if we choose to do that, then we just keep the old language, but give it, put it in the new, new place. So much of this is going to be so helpful to have, the new special permit criteria. There's a lot of this that's going to be very helpful to have as soon as we can get it in place.
Agreed.
All right, so I think.
Sorry. This is just procedural stuff. If we're going, if we're thinking that, well, maybe Chris and Sarah will take a shot at developing this offline, and then we bring it to the next meeting. I would suggest that we bring Mark into those meetings because he understands the mechanics of what the warrant will need to, to be. So I just throw that out there. And the other thing I wanted to clarify is my reading from Alan was not that he demanded that it be done in the spring, but that he really wanted to consider the opportunity for the most amount of people to weigh in on things. And I think particularly when they're controversial, but I don't think we'll know what's truly controversial until we've given our best shot at explaining why we want to make the changes. As Chris said, most of them are, if you just can be patient and let us explain what we're trying to do, I think most people will understand that we're not trying to do anything devious here, and and that they might not be as controversial as we seem, so.
An example of that is the D district. If you just read the language, we're breaking into two D districts. Oh my God. End of the world, but it turns out, no, we already have them really broken into two districts.
Yeah, we, we need to get that map fixed up.
Yeah.
Um, so just to comment on Sue's point, we only have a limited number of hours left with Mark Bobrowski. I would suggest that we wait on having him, and he seems like we need to own this, and that he will need his hours to explain some of the legal issues perhaps, or, you know, at public hearings and at town meeting, and that's going to be a number of hours, probably. You know, maybe we can kind of do a budget of however many hours we're going to have, and how many hours of town meeting we're going to need inform and work backwards from there, because, and then we'll have some specific questions. But I would suggest that we not use his time to come to the.
I think, yeah, so.
Makes, yeah, that makes sense.
Not necessarily for the meeting, but he has some, just the mechanics of it, even when he was explaining, he and Alan were explaining, and I think they really just kind of cut to the chase. So I just don't want us to chase our tail and then have something that mechanically won't work, that's all. So even if we figure it out and send it to him or something, I just would like to have his input on, on the mechanics of it, so make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Okay. So we'll, we'll look forward to our Workaholics, Sarah and Chris, for something for next week, and I'm sure, next meeting, I'm sure it'll be great.
Thank you so much, guys. It's great.
All right. Thank you. Okay, planners report, Sue, any I don't have it, maybe I can put it on. Anything new? I know there was a wastewater treatment plant scenario, was that?
So the wastewater treatment plant study was completed. I put it in the SharePoint site. The takeaway is it really didn't identify a viable, affordable alternative right at this time, but it outlined a number of potential future alternatives, I would say that. And that we really just need to continue to study our options. The, I just want to point out that I don't think there's anything else that's screaming for attention in there. The open space and recreation plan is, you know, awaiting comments from DCS, and then it will, they will be asking for a, a a planning board letter of recommendation, letter of support. So if, if someone could make sure that they understand the master plan, or if you want me to draft a letter of support that you could consider, I'd be happy to do that, but we should be ready to give that to them in the near future.
Okay, that would be great.
And I could, if you'd like, I could present the major recommendations on it, and, and then you could kind of decide at a meeting your level of support for it. But I would assume that it would be an easy thing to, to offer your, a letter of support for the open space plan.
Sounds good, Sue. Don't want to burden the board with, we're in the, you know, the throes of this recod, so if you could do it, that'd be great.
Ron, I have a couple of questions on the report.
Go ahead, Mary.
Sue, do you know when they, the, the planning board will need the letter for the open space and rec plan, when we would need that by?
I never know, because it, they're waiting for DCS to give their input on it, which sometimes means the consultant might need to make some changes. But I would say within, you know, a month or two, doesn't hurt to have it ready. I don't, I don't see the recommendations changing, so I think it's easy to look at the recommendations and decide whether you support this.
Okay, so we're just looking at the recommendations?
Well, you can look at the whole plan, but I think your support comes from, are they, is it going in the right direction? Are we, is the plan outlining the town's objectives correctly? Are we, or is the plan, um, outlining the town's objectives correctly?
Okay.
Um, but it's, but there's, it's been online for a while and you can offer recommendations on the text, et cetera, directly to the consultant. I know it said it closed on June 25th, but if there's anything, I'm sure you'd accept comments.
Okay. Um, the, I just, so the, I think I had asked at the last town plan report too. So the cemetery wasn't, the cemetery assessment, I didn't see that on here. So that's still being reviewed by town staff?
So, um, yeah, thanks for asking. We did, was reviewed by town staff. Um, they, uh, we, the town staff asked the consultant to made a few, um, few changes to just provide a little bit of more information. I think that they did return that pretty quickly and I just am waiting for DPW to say if it meets their needs. Um, and then that will, and that should be ready to go. So I would expect that should be ready by the, within a week or so. Just trying to confirm that it meets DPW's needs.
And then, um, so you never put recodification as an item for update on here?
Well, I don't because we, it's your project and you've been having it as an agenda item. So.
Um, do we, gee, are you still going to pass over the emails, the recodification emails that you've received? So we can look at those.
I, I don't know why you're, I don't know what you're talking about. Do you mean, um, comments that people made?
Yeah, you said you had comments from residents.
Um, yeah, I, I put them in a matrix. So I can share those anytime. I can put that matrix comment, um, on the SharePoint site. I will do that. It captured them from both our meetings and, um, emails.
We need to discuss those at some point, I think. Um, Sue, right?
But, yeah, I was, say, we have to, um.
Put them in.
As we continue down the recodification, we need to, um, discuss what was the input from residents from our last forum and then the emails.
Yeah, that's something still on our plate. That's a good point.
Uh, can I just ask about the wastewater, uh, study? Ron, did you have a chance to look at that? And I was, because I know you, as you have.
Oh, I, I, you know, I, yeah, I looked at it. They studied four scenarios. Two were route changes going directly to SESD. One was to Beverly and to pump to Beverly. One was pumped to Gloucester. The Beverly and Gloucester had similar costs. The other two were, uh, I don't know, 10 million more. But then at the end of their report, they said, sorry, you can't go into any SESD anyway. They're, they're full up. You can't do it anyway. So maybe in 20 years. So I think that also makes pumping to Beverly a moot point because they eventually wind up in the same place. So it sounded like to me that three of the four scenarios are out. And then they said at the last minute in the report that the town asked them to study, uh, a treatment plan up at the, um, limited commercial district site. And I don't think they got into that, uh, too deeply. That's how I read the report. Um, Sue, maybe you can, um, correct me if I missed anything, but.
Yes. So the, um, I think they, they didn't say that it, I think they said at this time, the Beverly, um, and the Essex, Southern Essex wasn't plausible. Um, that it might be in the future and at least we have the data. Um, if that future possibility, we need to look at that. Um, Gloucester does look like a more viable solution. They seem to be a more willing partner, um, possibly. But that is also, you know, five or 10 years in the future, but we should continue that conversation. The, the discussion about it being.
Sorry, but it's really important to say Gloucester is only primary treatment. So, um, yeah, we have secondary treatment now. So.
Right.
One of the reasons Gloucester might want us to pay for some of that additional capital. So anyway.
Yeah.
Apples at all.
Right. Yes. Um, and then the idea of another on site, site treatment place somewhere other than at the waterfront, um, was really to, to think about the ability for us or the opportunity for us to, to create, put water back in, um, recharge it back in the areas, you know, at the head of our water supply or watershed so that, um, we're not pumping it out into the ocean. It's good on a lot of ways, but this scope just didn't have, they just didn't have the scope in this study to, to do anything than other, just to give some really, um, very general parameters of what we would need to look for in terms of land permeability, um, et cetera. So it, it really said, you need to study this separately.
Would we be giving them that, 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 would we allow them to, could we ask them to study that? Is the town thinking about that?
Well, I think it would be another $100,000, um, study. We would have to find a grant or something for it. It may be less. I, I am just throwing numbers out there. This one was a hundred thousand. So, I mean, maybe it would be less. I mean, we could certainly look at permeability and other things like that. But, um, Sarah may want to know a whole lot more than I do on this, what it might cost or.
Well, I, I do have two questions about that study. If Ron, if, do you mind, do you mind if, okay. Um, the first is about, um, I, I've heard several times and read in that report that the idea, one of the opportunities is to be able to use the site of the current wastewater treatment plant for some housing or something else. And, uh, my question, I guess, is if that site has use, why wouldn't, why, maybe the groundwater recharge is the answer. Why wouldn't we use that site for its existing use? If the site is going to be inundated with a storm surge and sea level, then, then would it have any use for any other use? It's sort of my, you know, why would you put housing there if it's, if it's, if it's a vulnerable site? Um, and if it's not imminently vulnerable, then why wouldn't we keep the wastewater treatment plant there? What is the motivation to move the plant? That's the first. I have a second.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead with this. Uh, you can answer the other one separate.
Okay. So the, um, the original, the original idea was to free that site up for other uses. Um, housing was one of them. It could be a combination of housing and commercial. And you could do that potentially there because you could lift it. Um, whereas you, it would be exceptionally, and you can't lift it. We can, we can embank the, what we've got there. And so it still would be a vulnerable site. Um, but it's not, you're not putting a critical resource there. Um, and you could, and you could design it so that it accommodates what it needs. Um, I'm looking at 30-foot houses all along the marsh here in, in Newbury. So, um, not that I like that, but, um, the other, um, the other thing was, um, part of it was recharging, recharging groundwaters. And, you know, has science gotten us to the point where that's a better solution than, um, treating it in, putting it out into the ocean and for it not to, you know, just to keep depleting our, you know, recharge opportunities. So go ahead. If that answers.
Are you, are you done, Sarah?
I have a second question.
She had another question.
If, about process, the, the second question is, um, if this, when, when we have a, a study like this, and maybe, I know this was done really for DPW, but I was struck by the fact that, you know, the two or three options they looked at really aren't viable. And so do we get an interim report or an, or a core, uh, sort of a schematic design level review where we sort of can change scope? Because it seems sort of too bad to have had them look at all these numbers for projects, pieces that are not, not viable to connect to Salem, which, um, was sort of a yes, no, um, binary response. And then they spent a lot of time and money assessing what it would take to connect to something that we can't connect to. Where perhaps had we known that really early, we could have redirected and said, um, gosh, what would it look like to, you know, do we have soils that can support a six acre recharge site? For example, which a soils map might tell you, we, it's going to be hard pressed, but nonetheless. Um, you know, a soils analysis as opposed to a piping analysis, a linear feet of pipe analysis. Hope you're muted.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I really, um, tried to push for a yes, no answer early on, but, um, that process took a long time. And I think they had done a lot of the technical work before they got to the, um, the political, we're really not, we can't, you know, we don't want to take you at this time. So it would have been nice to pivot earlier, um, on that. And, and we didn't. I, I knew that they were starting conversations, um, further along in the process that I would have, then would have been ideal. But I, I think it was, um, they were being cautious and political. And, um, anyway, the idea of a, um, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. You were talking about.
That is my question.
Recharge.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I, I think people wanted to know, have an articulated, detailed answer as to why. It's very tempting to tie into Beverly. It's always been. A lot of people have thought of it and said it. So I think it was helpful to have a very articulated, uh, flushed out, uh, impact, what that would look like, how, why that can't really work. It's not realistic. But this report, um, to me sort of says, we need to look really seriously at where we're going to find six acres of perccable soil or whatever the, uh, four acres or, I'm not sure it's full six, but four perccable soil. And if that's true, and I don't want to throw a bomb in our, in our meeting here, but shouldn't, might that be part of how we view the LCD? And which are the portions of the LCD that we might want to intentionally target or reserve for a possible, uh, or elsewhere in town? But, uh, where, do we know fairly quickly where that's, what likely locations that might be? Because it seems to me in the end, that's where we're going to head. Um, and then secondarily, I would just say about downtown, it's exciting to see how much land is freed up. And Sarah, it will be used because we're not going to abandon our downtown. So reusing all that land that's freed up is really actually thrilling, I think. That's where elderly housing should be and, and, um, a variety of other uses, municipal offices and et cetera, et cetera. It, it's really exciting, um, what it could open up. But isn't that where we're headed? That we're going to have an in-town treatment plant?
We do.
I, I'm not an expert enough to know where we will. I think we, I think for a smaller amount of money, we can do some, um, some drilling, some, some, some boring to find out, um, what is permeable. And I think we should do some of that. But it could come up on a site that, you know, is now used for something absolutely different. But we should, I think, watch the science and keep our options open.
I just have doubts. It looks like it's very rocky up there for perccable soil.
Well, could you buy, is, is it even reasonable to buy a one, a couple of parcels of land? It might only take a couple of parcels of land and remove the houses and do it there where it's cheaper, where there is perccable soil.
You mean like the DPW site?
Well.
That's led to.
It, it, it's a big subject. I realize that. It's hard to come up with an answer. But, um, but I think if we're supposed to be visionary here as a planning board, um, that's where we're headed.
All right.
Thank you.
On the agenda, but it's a good discussion. Thanks. Thanks, Sue. Um, update on the new member appointment. Uh, the selectmen announced that they're taking applications. We will be having a joint meeting with candidates on next Monday. So, um, we're meeting next Monday at 6:30. I asked the, the board of selectmen to kind of put it first on the agenda and I believe they agreed. So we will be interviewing candidates for Gary Russell's seat. So mark your calendars for next Monday. Approval of regular minutes, June 28th. Helene, any comments on the minutes?
No, thank you.
Good job. Um, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved. Sarah.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Uh, roll call vote. Um, Ms. Creighton?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Delicio? I don't know if she's still with us. I'll go move on. Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah.
Ms. Rowley?
Yes.
And chair says yes. Helene, publish the minutes. Any subcommittee or liaison updates?
Um, could Chris, do you have anything to comment on the, um, affordable housing meeting? Where did you go?
It was actually pretty good, pretty good turnout. Lots of good discussion. Um, uh, I don't really have any, there's nothing specific came out of it because there isn't much specific to talk about, but the general plan, I, I think was pretty well received. I don't know. Sue, do you have any thoughts on it? Oh, Sue wasn't there.
Miss, I was not there.
Guess I'm carrying all the water here by myself. Yeah, no, it was, uh, I thought it was productive. Like there were some good questions asked. Um, and we'll just move on.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Um, anybody have anything else they want to bring up? Okay. So we'll see you all next Monday, 6:30-ish with a joint meeting. Other than that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I move?
So how about a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio, I don't know if she's still with us. Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we're adjourned. See you next week. Thank you all.
Bye, man.
Bye.